They didn't take that? I don't know, they're like, we have to check a box and they took drivers out and if you don't check that box. All right, we'll go ahead and call the city of Bellevue Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in order Monday, October twenty first, two twenty four at five thirty P M. So we are missing both Robert and Eric so far, let's hopefully they one of them will show up. But as far as the notice of agenda compliance, finding that the regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho Code seventy four two oh four within forty eight hours prior to the meeting at City of Bellevue City Hall, the post office on the city's website on October sixteenth. Do I have a motion that this meeting was?
I don't know if this is gonna work for me. Change in the.
Okay, do I have a motion to this meeting was or accurately noticed?
I moved the notice for this October twenty first regular meeting was completed in accordance with the Idaho Code section seven four dash two zero four.
There's.
Oh, second.
Right.
All right, motion passes. Any conflict associated with the agenda tonight? Um, anybody, nobody's online, so it's just us unless there's somebody wanna make a comment that's not on the agenda. Good there. Okay, approval of meeting minutes, October seventh.
We were a little late getting those put together and I forgot to send them out after that, so you don't have them, so please skip this agenda item, we'll get it in November.
Okay, no, no problem, yeah, I guess what you said, I don't understand. But what I did see was the consent agenda. As far as findings of fact for the Ronald Arnold, Carden Gourd, automatic son. Project that we heard last, last meeting. So we. Anything anybody wants to talk about with that, with those findings of fact?
It looked straightforward.
Looks okay. Yeah, I thought, oh goodness, so any. What are your day of motion for those? That point of fact?
Eric used on that one, so.
I'll move to a group consent agenda items, including findings of fact on the conditionally use permit for medics being some of our L C.
There's three.
And I'm second.
Yeah, I'm clear.
Hi, hi.
All right, motion passes. Okay, now we can move on to our work session. Let's see, Robert did say he will not be able to make it. All right. Yeah, cool, fine, so you got some.
Yeah.
Turn it over to you here, man.
So last week or last week, you guys just gave me some items to discuss, I did my best to interpret, it's pretty casual, please interrupt me if I'm not answering questions or even have further things to discuss, the first one was kinda how the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council work together. I, there's a nice video series from Idaho Associated Cities and Idaho Planning Association, one of which is really dives into this, we'll go ahead and just play that now. The Q R code on the PowerPoint gets you the full video series, if you wanna watch those.
I mean, Tony was trying to get in on the Zoom. Paper.
All right, sorry. Kelly Packer, the Executive Director for the Association of Idaho City, and I'm here to talk about roles and responsibilities. Planning and zoning commissioners have one of the most important yet most challenging jobs in local government. The issues range from variances of mere inches to rezoning for a new two hundred and fifty thousand square foot Walmart to planning the future of the entire community through the comprehensive plan. These citizen planners are expected to become fluent in the principles of planning and gain an understanding of how to effectively implement their city's comprehensive plan through zoning and subdivision ordinances. Commissioners must comply with complicated statutory or constitutional mandates and are sometimes required to act like judges or legislators. The meetings can be long and contentious, but the work is critical. The Local Land Use Planning Act, L U P A, requires that cities and counties prepare and implement a comprehensive plan, adopt ordinances for zoning subdivisions, adopt procedures for permits, adopt standards for development, provide for notice, public hearing and records of hearings, issue decisions in the form of findings of fact and conclusions of law, create and maintain a record of all proceedings.
One of the challenges, I think, is to get community to recognize that the whole process, the comp plan, the zoning ordinances, all the other ordinances are really, they tend to look at them primarily as a method of regulating growth. It also needs to be to look at as to improve the lives of those who are there already, not just the dear people, but the ones who are there.
The Local Land Use Planning Act, L U P A, requires every city and county to exercise planning, zoning and subdivision authority, which can be delegated to a certain extent to a citizen planning and zoning commission. Some Idaho municipalities choose to have a separate planning and zoning commission. How it's done is up to each individual jurisdiction based on the size of their community and the planning and zoning needs. Having the city council or county commission also act as the planning and zoning authority works well for small communities with few planning and zoning decisions and reduces the need for true hearings. A separate commission works best for larger jurisdictions and takes some of the work off of the city council or county commission.
The Local Planning Act does not require a planning and zoning commission. And by the way, it also allows the planning commission and a separate zoning commission if you wanted to do it that way, but many small communities are having a difficult time getting planning commission membership to be willing to serve, to commit to the training that's necessary to do a full and complete job. People wanna go to Arizona for the winter or do other recreational things when they're in their retirement years and so they might be willing to serve if the, the, the period of service was broken up, but it's important to note that you don't need to have a planning and zoning commission. It can save staffing requirements, it can save the costs of compliance with the Local Planning Act through publication and other matters, by the way, those publication costs can usually be billed to applicants if your ordinance properly addresses that.
The Planning and Zoning Commission is established by local ordinance, which specifies the number of commissioners, generally three to twelve, the terms of the commissioners, and the decisions that will be made by them or recommendations they make to the governing board. It is important to note that the city council or county commission are the only bodies with the authority to adopt ordinances and comprehensive plans. Whoever is responsible for planning, the elected officials and members of the commission should become familiar with and have a working knowledge of L U P A as well as the community's comprehensive plan and ordinances. The commission should protect the interests of all who come before the commission by providing due process. Familiarity with meeting procedures, the Idaho Open Meeting Law, and the rules for quasi judicial hearings will help ensure due process is met. Step back from specific cases to see the overall good of community, make decisions and move on, be efficient with others' time and energy, and look ahead to consider future consequences of today's decisions. Much of that information is included in this video series. Now let's take a closer look at the players in the planning process. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Commission include being the community's caretaker of the comprehensive plan. In this role, the commission keeps the plan up to date and ensures that the decisions made today consider the future consequences as anticipated in the comprehensive plan, being the elected board's workforce on planning matters. By having the commission recommend some and act on other planning decisions, the commission establishes a record on the decision. The record includes public hearing testimony, application submittals, written comments, and staff reports. By creating this record, the commission saves the elected officials' time and allows them to only have to focus on any outstanding issues when the decision comes before them. The governing body may also ask the commission for advice and they expect the commission to carry out policy, being prepared and able to make decisions. Being prepared means reviewing the application submitted, all written correspondence, the applicable sections of the comprehensive plan and ordinances, and the staff report. Being prepared also requires listening, asking questions, and giving fair and equal consideration to the testimony given at the public hearing. Being able to make decisions requires thoughtful deliberation with fellow commissioners and rendering a decision based on the public record, the community's comprehensive plan, and ordinances, even if the individual commissioner may personally disagree. It also means giving clear direction on the basis for the decision so that a written decision can be drafted that reflects the decision made. The powers of the commission vary by the type of land use decision. Legislative decisions involve planning for the entire or large portions of a community. In these decisions, the commission recommends an action to the council or board of county commissioners. Examples of legislative decisions are comprehensive plan adoption or amendments, zoning ordinances, zone map changes. Decisions on site-specific actions that implement the comprehensive plan can be delegated to the commission or not, depending on the local ordinance establishing the responsibilities of the commission. Examples of these decisions include conditional use permits, variances, and planned unit developments. Subdivisions are a special case where, while site-specific, the final decision must be made by the city council or county commission. The role of the commission chair. The chair is the presiding officer and must conduct the proceedings in a fair manner. The chair calls the meetings to order, ensures that the commission sticks to the agenda, and recognizes individuals who wish to speak. Chairs must be effective meeting leaders and keep all participants focused and meetings on path. The chair is the commission's ambassador to the public. No matter how long the hearing, the chair must preserve order and decorum. The chair retains the rights of a member, including the right to vote and the right to discuss issues unless prohibited by local ordinance. When the chair does want to engage in debate, it is advisable for the chair to turn over the gavel to the vice chair. The role of staff and experts. Some local jurisdictions have professional planners on staff. Staff are relied on to deal with the day-to-day work of planning and zoning. The size and duties of the staff will vary according to the size of the community and the amount of development activity. Some local jurisdictions, especially in rural areas or with small populations, rely on the expertise of the commission members or make contact with planners or experts when the level of complexity calls for it. Either way, these individuals play a vital role in reviewing applications and assisting local officials. Their responsibilities may include administration and enforcement of land use ordinances, response to public inquiries, processing applications, preparing a staff report that objectively analyzes an application, presenting the staff report at the hearing, pointing out issues that should be clarified by the applicant during the hearing, making recommendations based on their expertise, and answering questions from the commission or governing board. The role of the city council or county commission. The elected officials have the final say in decisions. Their responsibilities include providing leadership, direction, and priority, making final decisions, and adjudicating appeals. Good planning comes from the efforts of all the decision makers in carrying out their responsibility in understanding their role and relationship to the others involved in the process. Issues can arise when one group steps out of their designated role. For example, elected officials respond to their constituents and in doing so may overturn a decision made by the P N D commission. The P N D commission must maintain an apolitical position and stick to the code in making their decisions, regardless of the pressure and interests heard by the public at a hearing. However, a city decides to do planning, being clear on the roles and responsibilities is important. And when problems develop, it is important to communicate to ensure that the commission and electives are operating consistently in the community's best interest. In other videos, we will provide a deeper dive on the various planning responsibilities of a planning and zoning commission and discuss the processes involved.
So as the video kinda got into, there's a differentiation between what you guys do as appointed body versus the city council, the political elected body who is expected more to be responsive to the public. Of course, on quasi judicial actions, they have to kinda step back from that and not engage in that part of communication, anything like that, just like you guys have to do. But they can look at the same set of facts, the same information, and come up with a different decision, and that's how politics tends to work. My recommendation, if you guys, you know, wanna make sure that your recommendations are being heard and being taken seriously and will generally be followed, is to be detailed, be transparent, thorough, follow the process. And really understand, especially on like policy setting and how we work administratively and how the code implements that to understand, you know, how an issue use permit works, how it gets through the process. Kind of, you know, on if we want to speed up tiny building permits and things like that to really understand how somebody goes from walking into the door saying, I wanna do this thing, to actually starting and getting instruction and getting going on that really. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Then the other topic is just kinda how we prioritize the projects moving forward. One of them was a comprehensive plan, which everybody talked to, said we need a new one. And I think that we don't have a budget for that at the moment, just 'cause I got hired at the end of the budget cycle and so we're gonna be kinda getting the steps in order over the next few months on getting that going. I did have a meeting this morning. We have some funding to do a transportation plan that'll be kicking out here in the next couple of weeks. We'll be working on that, hoping to get adopted in July, so following up on that front.
What will that involve, I guess, or how would we be involved with that or not, or what? The transportation plan?
That is to be determined at this point, we're gonna have a technical advisory group, so if you guys want to be a part of that, we're gonna be happy to get you on there. And then as a, as a body, I would expect you guys to be making a recommendation to council, there would be a planning document that we would use when we're crawling down, having a lot of do entitlements and requiring that developers and budget cost us.
So with, and maybe I'm just not to sidetrack this with the, I might as well, with the transportation, what, what makes up a transportation plan? What? What's involved with that?
I think in this one, it'd be a fairly limited scope. It's gonna be more, I think the general outcome is not gonna be we're gonna fix traffic or we're gonna, you know, do this big, it's gonna be, here's where we're at, here are the pavement conditions of the whole town, you're where we should probably prioritize sidewalk installations. Here are some other things we need as a community. And so it's gonna be more, it's gonna be pretty technical outcome, I think.
Yeah.
The, the, so that it can help improve the plan if you are drafting like that.
So does that include then our bike pad incorporated in there as well then? I know sometimes the cities have had a, a separate bike pad plan and then transportation plan, but it'd be nice to have them together.
Yeah, I think as far as something like the Blake County Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan that recently got adopted through the county, I wouldn't expect this document to look very much like that, I think it would be, here are our street sections, here are where we're gonna put sidewalks and bike paths, and here's how they're going to get constructed.
Yeah, okay.
And then I think the, the bike pad master plan, all that would come through the comp plan process more.
Okay.
Thoroughly.
Cause yeah, there is a transportation chapter, right, in the comprehensive plan, and so this would, would this be a just a detailed version of the transportation section of the comprehensive plan or how?
I, I think again, it's a little too, we had our kickoff meeting this morning, so it's pretty unclear at this point what exactly the final product is gonna look like, whether it is going to be a amendment to the transportation chapter of the comp plan or if it's gonna be a separate, more technical document.
Yeah, okay. And so is that what you said, the meeting, is that maybe already said, is this a, have we hired somebody to help us with this?
Uh, yeah, one of the associates out of Boise is gonna be the consulting.
Okay, okay, right.
And then yeah, L T A C is the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council that facilitates these grants for I T D.
Cool.
We got tax amendments, a large topic of conversation as of late. The one that you guys have been talking about for a while is gonna be on the city council agenda next week. Generally speaking, I like to do two staff initiated ones over the winter. One is just kinda cleanup of like, hey, this could work a little bit better, or I found a typo, or the intent is not aligning with the actual language of the code, that sort of thing. I just gotta keep a running list over the summer during busy season and then once things slow down a little bit, I start put together a package to bring back to you guys. And then the, the larger one, more project type of thing, where we wanna take on housing, wanna take on transportation, we have a big topic area that we wanna cover and really take a deep dive into that, do work sessions and
Yeah.
public outreach and all that, and that's a bigger subject.
So is that kinda how you've seen things over your, your career as far as you're super slammed in the summer, you know, or dealing with building permits and things like that, and then just, I mean, kinda to say, nobody slows down anymore.
Right.
And so, and you, but you kinda hurry up a little bit more, cause I could see your point as far as like also not wanting to change things mid, mid build season? And so.
Yeah, partly it's really convenient to the building and development community to just not be switching gear midstream and having the building change rapidly. But then, yeah, I mean, slowing down, probably not the right word for it, but especially in snowy climates, there's a change in how things are functioning in the office around, I mean, October, the driveway is closed, they can't connect the water and sewer. There might be snow on the ground at that point, so it's less of processing building permits and quicker applications and that sort of thing, and more of the longer projects and the big developments that are hopefully starting at that point in time instead of waiting until March and break down with me.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Well, it'd be nice to be able to, yes. Cause I think there's some, probably some challenges, I'm not sure which ones are the most important, or I'm certainly not aware of them all, that, to try to triage those things and figure out how we can make best use of everybody's time.
That'll be our discussion next Monday with council, where they want we to hit first.
All right, okay, yeah, cool.
So speaking of that text amendment then, that they're, that they're still reviewing and gonna talk about at their next meeting, so it sounds like they could be making changes on their own and accept it, or they could just fully reject it? Is that kind of the next steps? Like, they could be like, we're gonna change this, 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 vote on it, yes, and it's done, or?
Theoretically, that's what they could take.
Or they're just like, kick it back, they're like, try again, is that?
I don't wanna speak prematurely out of being.
Oh, no, I was just trying to understand, like, like the possibilities, yeah.
Yeah, they, with ordinances, they can accept it as is, they can deny it as is, or they can make changes. Making changes gets really complicated as far as how like the actual ordinance is written and how we publish that in the paper and all those sorts of things. So like, we try not to do those on the fly at the meeting, if they want me to change it, typically send it back to staff and have them edit it.
Gotcha.
Send it back to staff most likely, but not necessarily send it all the way back to P N Z.
They can do either one.
Okay.
Yeah, if you have a preference, if you would like.
All right. Well, and I think our, our thing, the thing that I, that caught me a little bit, and this was probably just with the perfect storm, you know, with the, you know, having, you know, consultants helping with, with that text amendment and then and, and then no, but no physical person here during that meeting. And then, you know, they see this and some things can get lost in translation a little, and so that's where I would, you know, think or hope that we would, you know, of course, we'd all like to think that the work we did was perfect and spot on, but if there's discussion, at least they can, there's some liaison to, to to say, yes, this was discussed, this was, you know, these were the outcomes, and hopefully those are all captured in the minutes.
Right.
But you know how it is, people don't read all it is. And, and so that they could, they could see that, you know, the, the discussion that happened, you know, and why we landed where we did. And then if there's questions that they would go back, questions to you or to the person, you know, who tempted to, to participate in that meeting wasn't, maybe, didn't have the ability to do that.
I think having onsite staff will make a big difference in that, in sort of like, my ability to communicate what you guys discussed and what you're really were thinking and attending to the council.
Yeah, true. Have that, it's special, yeah. But before we leave that, anything else on, on that, you guys, as far as that, being able to take what, what we have done here and, and take it to the city council and we'd like to see or not to, or, or recommendations to how that's done?
Yeah, I think as far as things, if anything gets kicked back, right, either to staff or to us, I almost feel like it depends on what it is, like, I feel like we worked really hard on it and I'd be interested if it, if that particular text amendment was getting kicked back, I'd be actually be interested in, in participating in that process. And even though staff's more qualified than I am, but it's like, we, you know, we worked hard on it, so I'd like to. That makes sense.
And when you say participate, what do you mean by that?
Oh, well. Oh, Brian mentioned, like, they think to possibly a- ask staff to make the edits, or they could kick it back to planning and zoning. So, I mean, I guess, yeah, I, I'm not deciding, so I don't know, I was just, I guess I was just saying out loud that it'd be nice if it was brought back to us.
Yeah.
If changes were being requested.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then hopefully, you know, we've never seen this before, but like, some. Instead of just like, you know, here, try again, you know, it's like, what, but what, what's? And I get it, you know, we're, we're supposed to be more as objective of all the code, they're political, but like, what's the rationale? Behind, you know, try again, it's like, okay, what is it that, that we? That they saw from their political point of view that, that we could, or should maybe massage from the. More objective point of view, because we gave them an objective point of view, it's like, I mean. We, we can't be any more objective than hopefully than we were the first time around, you know what I'm saying? But again, we, we haven't seen our experiences before, so, um, I think that would be interesting to try to. See what that would look like, you know, and Eric, you were gonna say something like.
Um, yeah, I was gonna say, uh. I think that. You kind of on the last, you know, kind of the last go around where, um. You know, in a sense, it felt like something was kind of dropped on our desk and said. Yeah, um, would you look at this? And it's like. Okay, yeah, we can look at it, what are you looking for from us? And, and I think that there's a, I think there's a balance where, um. You know. Taking, taking some initiative and, and, and direction ourselves is, is definitely. Worthwhile and valuable, um. But also getting a little bit more direction, you know, if council asks us to take a look at something and, and. Make some recommendations, like some kind of. Channeling or guidance on what they're looking for us to do with it is. Would be, would be very helpful. You know, and I agree, we had, we had numerous, um. Conversations about, you know, um. There is the, you know, there is the objective side, but there is absolutely some kind of normative stuff built into it also, you know, what is. What's best for the community, you know, there's no objective. Fact or truth of what is best for the community, you know, there's a, there's a bunch of normativity built into that. Um, and so, that's, I think, where the disagreements will crop up, for sure. And, and I think being able to provide a, a little bit of. A background on kind of the rationale for why we ended up where we did is, you know, is super helpful. Um, so I would suggest, you know, potentially, I don't know if there's a, a time where. You know, where you, Brian, could, could, you know, have a phone call with, with John, or. You know, maybe it's tonight, maybe we run through it, um, just so you've got a little bit more of the background of. How and why we landed where we did.
Yeah.
Um, I feel like that input could be really valuable to council, or if they're looking at it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, um. I will say my suggestion to council at this time is that we slow things down a little bit. So I think there'll be more opportunity, more, more with you guys in the near future, um. And then as far as like, what your discussion is, how we term this is good for the community, that's really what the comp plan is meant to do, um, sure, but. If you don't have one that you really like and trust and feel as reflective of the community, need to, it's hard to actually reply that effectively. That's why that's moving forward.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's interesting, I mean, and, and I'm not sure if you know, or like, how we got here with the comp plan. Uh, with the little one we have right now, um, you know, you know, we, we got that because the. The, well, the Echols annexation was gonna happen, it's how many years ago, quite, quite a few years ago, and the community was enraged. And they said, hey, we don't, we need an updated comprehensive plan, so then the, the community came together and wrote that. Um, and then, uh, it was just an ad hoc, you know, or group of people that did that, and I was one of them. And, and, you know, it's like with anything, you know, there were thirty people in the room, and then, you know, a handful of people actually put it together, and then they recommended the P and Z. And the class and went to city council, and so it was a real grassroots, um, effort, uh. And looking at it, there's definitely holes in it, you know, and things could be done much better if it was done from a professional standpoint, but. Um, but in terms of representing the community, I thought it was really quite, it was probably as representative as it could be.
Yeah.
At that time, you know, uh, and of course, that's been several years ago now, um. So it'll be, it would, I'm curious to see how it would go, you know, or when it, it does get updated and what, what it looks like, um. But, you know, it's, yeah, I might kind of attach to it, sure, but, but also, but I think there's some. There's definitely room for growth, and especially with everything that we're seeing and challenged with these days, um, so. So I look forward to it, but also, it's gonna be, it's not an easy undertaking either. So, yeah, well, that's enough on that. Yeah, so one, one, one question that I do have, and I'm not sure, not questioning, but throw up, is it ever? Does it ever happen that somebody, or I guess maybe it'd be the chair, or somebody from P and Z is present during the city council meetings? When those types of, um, things are brought forth, or brought to the city council to, to there to act as a. As a liaison to, to help with the discussion, or is that frowned upon, or is it not good practice, or?
Um, it's a little unusual, I think, a better way of doing that, especially on larger projects. And bigger policy items would be to just have a joking work session where you have the council all meeting and. Discuss some work items together.
Yeah, you know, and that's never been done, not since I've been here, um, and I think it's. To, for every once in a while, once a year, you know, I think that something like that would be a good idea. To say, you know, we can talk about the challenges that we're facing in the community, and how can we? You know, how can you as staff and them as council and I as P and Z try to figure out triage, you know, what we can, you know, what can be the one or two things we work on per year? Um, so that we're all kind of on the, at least speaking to each other and, and, you know, actually meeting each other sometimes for the first time.
Yeah.
Um, I, I would, I think that would be helpful with our community, um, so I'd throw that out as you. As you move ahead with working with them on different things in your position and everything.
Yeah, one, I think one topic specifically, and you might see this differently, this was, um, recommended by Great Western Engineering. Um, when we were discussing in our text amendment and doing, having, um, you know, deep restrictions on, for, um. Uh, for housing in the business district, and it was suggested by them to wait on those items. Until we could have a broader discussion about what we wanted Bellevue to look like. Um, and I was just gonna say that if you agreed on that, that that would be a good topic for. A joint work session to really like get everyone on that same page, so then we could work forward to that.
Yeah, and that kind of goes to this, you know, the Blaine County Housing Authority's recommendations, you know, that we were, that they were. We were, they spoke loud and clear what they would like to see, and, you know, we, we tried to massage that, you know, couldn't do it. Exactly perfect, you know, but we had to come up with a compromise, and this was the best we thought. And so, but then to see how the city council would view that, and, and how to triage that work, is that kind of what you're saying a little bit too?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, cause I think, you know, we're, we're drinking from fire ups here when it comes to this stuff. And, and to do things in a, in, in somewhat of a responsible timeline, too, I think is important. Cause we're gonna go try to get it perfect, I mean, we'll be here for another decade, and nothing will change, we gotta, we gotta try to figure that out, uh, what that looks like. We're on the same page with those things. Okay, cool.
Any other text amendments?
We definitely open to the cleanup part, you know, like as you start coming through it and stuff, definitely open to talking more about text amendments and maybe. Tidy them a little bit, but I don't think we've had any other ones really.
Yeah.
Coming up, that was the big one this year, but I bet there's cleanup events happening, so, anything like that.
Then, yeah, I guess there are two categories, there are ones where, oh, Supreme Court just made a new ruling, all of this section is. Now void, we have to figure something else out, and we'll do those kind of on the fly as quickly as needed. Uh, and then the applicants in general public are also allowed to pay the fee and initiate an application, we. Treat that like any other additional lease permit or subdivision or anything like that, and then you go in the queue and. Hopefully get feedback to them ahead of time, so they're not wasting much money and, or attorney's time, uh, but. Sometimes that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
And then, uh, and there's the projects that you guys are seeing is development applications, and those. When they come in, we review them, make sure they're a complete application that is technically approvable and, uh. Meets code and comp plan and is not a total mess, and then we schedule for an agenda.
And it sounds like, do we know what the, do you know what the latest is on? On those, I mean, we, we've heard for quite a while, there were two or.
Uh, the two annexations.
Annexations are ready, ready at any moment, but then we've been hearing that for quite a few years.
Not heard anything on the northern one recently, and then, yeah, about the Great West last week, a week or four. Uh, and just, there, last they heard was late July, they got sent an email and. They said they follow quickly and have responded, so. So we see, and somebody responds.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, so. So then, your, your workload, you know, you, you kind of sit there, I'm assuming like, okay, the. The big workload's coming, but then is it or not, and then how, how do you triage your? And then, of course, assuming you, you know, I want you to get your pee underneath you, right?
Yeah, and there's. Plenty of background projects to work on that aren't specifically related to any one development, and then once the development starts. Popping up, I'll adjust the background projects to accommodate.
Yeah.
Or not, and that's what even happened.
Yeah. Okay.
Hopefully we can get somebody hired to handle most of the day-to-day planning work soon, and. That will free up some more time.
Yeah. Sounds good, yeah, cause I could see those developments taking a lot of time.
Yeah.
I mean, our commanding, I'm probably a hundred percent here, right, or somebody's time. Yeah.
Yeah, discuss this a little with the license before the meeting, but we do still have Great West on contract, and if we need to. Outsource some of that to them, like.
Yeah, okay, cool. Sounds good.
I'll all have.
Um, what, maybe if, if we can, a couple of things that, that, or, or one, one thing, two things that I'd like to say. That all, that we do, the way, as we try to be objective, you know, as possible here at our level. The two things that, um. Make it really challenging, especially with these developments coming up, is one is, you know, water and sewer. And again, being a part of this for quite a few years, I keep, I've heard multiple times, oh yeah, there's a new water study going on. And then, or waiting for the results of this study and that study, but so I still have not heard, okay, you know, just. How good is our water source? I know it's, it's, you know, we have spring and we have two wells, but like, you know, how are we doing water-wise? And can we handle new development, or can't we, you know, and how are we doing with this? I think that's some good sound. Data would be really, really advantageous for us. So that we can make a good sound recommendation.
Yeah.
Um, and I, and then also with the, the other part of, you know, with the developments, when they do come in, is like, you know, what? And they say, oh, we, we're gonna have, we have water rights, or, but what does that look like? You know, a water right is one thing, but then can you drill? And then what is that, you know, for a well, and then what does that look like in terms of, you know, how does that interface with the community? Uh, community's water source, um, but I think that, that's one thing that I think we really have to, to. For us to do good at our job, we need that kind of information, that data, um, and then, of course, the second one is the sewer. Now, these are probably with every city, you know, has experience in this, or has these issues, but, you know, the. The capacity, you know, and then we've got water line, or not water lines, but sewer lines that, you know, upgrading, and they talk about putting in. Backup lines and things like that, and so I think that the better we can have that, you know, very. As simple as it can be and digestible for, for us at our level was really, really helpful, yeah. And don't expect you to have a solution even right now, whatever, but, but as we, as we move on, it's, it's been. It's been a, a moving target for. Fifteen years.
I think something I'm already working on is finding all of the studies and plans and things that have been worked on and adopted by council over the years and. Putting them in one location, um, the website that we can find in reference, uh, and then also. Uh, the water and sewer, the very technical studies are not user-friendly most of the time, I haven't looked too deeply at the ones we have. Currently, uh, but then make a more readable. Uh, kind of like executive summary sort of thing.
Yeah, really nice executive summary, you know, with one or two tables, spell it out very clearly.
Um, bigger application probably have, or consulting engineers on those different utility systems. Provide comment, make sure they provide a comment, and if needed, come either virtually or in person meetings, and give you guys. The rundown on what the impacts of development would be on that.
Yeah.
Given utility.
Yeah. Cool. Right, so maybe you guys have any other questions or things, I don't know, open forum here a little bit.
There we go, yeah.
Cool. While you're, you're getting your pee underneath you a little bit, are you?
A little bit.
Yeah. Good. Okay. Yeah, I guess, but, uh, and then are we? Up for two weeks from today, or what's, what are we thinking? Do we have anything on the agenda for?
No applications on the agenda, uh, there's. Um, I mean, keep the meeting on schedule for sure, I think, uh. Again, be talking to council on co-mendment and next steps on that, and I think that maybe. More work on that.
Yeah, okay, um, so then, that would be the. Would that be the four?
Four.
Yeah. Um, is anybody not available on four?
I should be here.
I'm here.
Who here?
Um, I may or may not be of sound mind, Bobby, to be here, this is, I'm having, I'm having shoulder, shoulder, shoulder surgery on the thirtieth.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so, um. Um, subject to be determined, I guess. Anyway, you guys. Carry on. Okay.
I mean, on that note, there was one meeting that this last year that you were gone for too, and I don't think it was like. Clear for everyone who was supposed to be in charge, cause I don't think we have a vice chair, and like, I think I just ran it, but.
You, you're right, and we don't, and the one thing too, another, here, another task out, items for you, Ryan, is. I've been chair for quite a few years, there are a handful of years, and I think that should be rotating. Um, or at least should be considered, you know, so. Um, or at least should be considered, you know, so, um, I don't, I don't. You know, want or need to be sitting here, if somebody else wants to do that, or we have a vote or whatever, it's, I think it's worthwhile to consider. Um, how that is gets rotated around.
It's by laws.
Yeah. Um.
But you're really good at it.
Well, I can tell.
That one meeting, yeah, Robert, I was like, you know, Robert, I think you're technically like two weeks older than me on the council.
But, yeah, we don't have a, like, a vice chair.
Ray ran a few of them.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You did.
So, yeah, I'm not sure how that works or should work or. Something to to look into, or you have some recommendations on, yeah.
Yeah, I'll. See if I can find some bylaws or. Or I can adjust them.
Okay. Yeah, I've never looked to see what they're. Our bylaws, what they are.
Was Ray vice chair, or would you just kind of assume the role when you were gone?
You know, he just had been around longer than I had, you know, for.
Yeah.
By long shot, um. Well, yeah, I think he just maybe just out of being here for many years. But, yeah, and and now, I mean, in terms of, I guess, he's lived kind of numbers of years or months or whatever served, I guess, and. Um, he's been here a little longer than Eric Kennedy.
Yeah, I came on in like fall of twenty twenty, I think.
Okay.
I think.
Yeah. So you could do a fun job of running the meeting.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll do it, it's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool. All right. Very well, um. Guess this point I would say, thanks, Brian, for putting this together, and I will say those videos, I remember Great West actually sent us. Um, you know, like a link to a lot of those videos and, uh. And I haven't watched them all, and I thought they're they're good, there's some good information in there, so thanks for doing that, putting it together, which. Still always a lot to learn.
I didn't make the video, my head did appear in that.
Oh. Okay, so you were, you were in the room.
No, I. They had some old video from a work session of some sort, but I have to be at it.
Hmm.
Um, no, the, um, Diane Pushlin and. The only AICP fellow in Idaho. Put them all together, I gotta cringe, do that, but, uh, the Idaho Association of Cities and Idaho APA, then I'm on board.
All right, okay, good. Yeah, well, they're they're nicely done.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're really good, so.
Yeah, except there's a QR code and slides there, you know, that will go to the whole.
Yeah, it'll hold this thing, yeah. Yeah, okay, well, I'm recovering from my surgery, I'll go through it. Okay, all right, well, I'm taking a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
I'm here.
Bye.
Bye. Hey, motion passes. Okay, thanks. Okay.